A need for the agencies to adapt to new rules when they occur and new policies when they occur, but this is nothing new. This went into effect quite a while ago. The government has been under financial stress for some time. That's why this reporting requirement was developed. Good managers in government, just like good managers in the private sector, should be subject to following the rules and the regulations that they are obligated to honor. And one of the requirements is to fulfill the reporting requirements to the legislature, to other entities, depending on what the laws require and the policies are. And I just think there's too much slippage in looking at the numbers of agencies and departments that did not comply. You know, I don't think they took it seriously. So I agree with Senator Respecho that the best way to handle this, and certainly, yes, many agencies are going to see a big change in their monies if this is realized, but let them make a case before us. Let them write to this legislature and request to present their case before us, why their money should be reinstated, but not to do it automatically. I don't think we should do it automatically. I think we should let the policy stand as passed by the last legislature and let the departments, agencies come back to us and request for supplemental to reinstate the 5 percent cuts if they can justify it. Thank you.
All right. Senator Barnes, Senator Munia Barnes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, I wasn't going to speak on this amendment, but I'd be remiss if I didn't. I stand in support with my good colleague from Agania Heights and just being able to listen to the previous speaker speak, my good colleague from Minilo, my neighbor colleague from Minilo. You know, there was talk about there saying how this provision in the law was new, they're not used to it. How many chances do you need to give? When they say that, you know, we got to get used to the system, we got to get used to the reporting. I remember when I first came in to this policymaking body, Mr. Chair, that was in the 27th Guam Legislature. And not just the media, but the whole community of Guam looked to us and wanted us to act. There are editorials all the time about true accountability and transparency. We had colleagues talking about that on their platform, and you know what? They finally came up with the law that the whole media, the whole community said, this is a good law. It would put the government administrators and management team on check, working with true accountability and transparency. And you know, Mr. Chair, that wasn't new because, you know what? In the 27th Guam Legislature, that was four years ago. So I don't know how much newer you can get or how this is just something new and coming and give us another chance. I really don't know how many more chances we can get. And I know, Mr. Chair, we talk about education, health, and safety being the most important factors when we look at providing those services from our government. But you know what? When you put this policymaking body to task and then you're going to say, okay, never mind, never mind, it's a good bill, but never mind, give me a chance. Where does that leave us? Where does that truly leave this body as policymakers, wanting to hold true accountability and transparency and saying, okay, we will put the government administrators to task. We will make sure that they abide. Mr. Chair, if I didn't stand in full support of something that was brought up when I first came in as a freshman senator, then I'd be doing it an injustice to our people of Guam. And remind you, I know what it is when I say in my heart that government is to provide for the basic services to our people of Guam. And you know what? When the people ask for accountability and transparency, believe it, we gave it. And now to renege on that, it's going to say, wow, never mind, because they'll always give us a chance. Sometimes we have to be firm as parents and when we give a direction to our children and they don't follow it, what do we do? If we don't punish them or hold them accountable, they're going to say, oh, no, that's okay because mom and dad, they're not going to tie me out, they're not going to let me. I can do it and do it and do it and do it and make all the mistakes because they're going to give me a chance. And Carlos, you know what we're talking about. You asked for it, you got it, and now we just got to stick to it. And I totally agree. If there is true commitment to wanting, have management come back, have the administration come back and show the body because at least you know that we are being fair and true to our commitment when we said we will hold true accountability and transparency. So, Mr. Chair, I support this amendment and I thank the author from Agania Heights for showing and continuing to show that transparency and accountability. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we're on the amendment by Senator Respecho.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you know, I support this amendment, but at the same time, you know, I was thinking that last year, I remember when this actually had occurred for the very first time, we found out, I think, that there was only one entity, a department or agency, whatever, that had not fulfilled the requirement. And of course, we were all scrambling and thinking that, well, this was the very first time, the first try, and it was not intentional to not turn in the report, so they asked to be forgiven. And you know, and one of the things that I said is that when we do that, then how then? You know, will they then be held accountable if we're going to turn right around and just say, well, nothing's going to happen, it was just going to slap your hands and that's okay, you know, next time? And I think that when you, and I'm sure that the mover of this at first, that the law who proffered this particular section, that was the Chair, I mean Senator Carvajal, who actually deals with the finances, was concerned that, you know, the departments and agencies have to be held accountable, accountable for the monies that they have received, to have some responsibility, to be able to manage, you know, their funds efficiently. And when you think about this, the individual normally tasked with this responsibility will be the director of the agency or the head of a department or agency. And the way I've always learned this is that, you know, if anything is going to happen, if anybody's going to take responsibility, it will be then the person at the helm. And here we are, talking about possibly not then maybe, or exempting rather, certain departments against and agencies. We're going to reduce the amount from 15 percent for all of them and only maybe stick with 5 percent, and we know that it's going to hurt, but we need to be a little bit more responsible with public funds. And what I like to do, but I don't think the amendment is ready, I was asking legal counsel to prepare it. Yeah, I'm going to amend it. So I just to talk about it and then I'll hand it out soon, or what do you prefer? Yes, but I know I'm going to get it out first, I want to.
Well, what is your amendment? Do you want to speak on your amendment?
So what I was saying earlier is that somebody has to be held responsible. We talked about this yesterday, and we don't want the employees to be hurt. We don't want programs to be hurt, you know? But somebody has to take responsibility. And for me, and that's the way I've been taught, is that even as a school principal, whenever anything happens to my children at the school and my faculty and staff, the buck stops with me. I have to be responsible. So therefore, my amendment then here is that I feel that there should be, or I think in this case, maybe a 20 percent salary deduction of the head of the departments and agencies who are responsible for reporting their expenditures so that they are managing their funds, the government funds, efficiently and effectively, and that they are going to be held accountable. And maybe after this, next quarter, every report will be in.
Senator Wampat, this section deals with the transfer authority of the governor and not the penalty for failure to report. I don't know how you're going to be able...
I'm going to add a section to that right below it.
Okay, so you're going to put it at the end of this?
Yes.
Is it going, okay, so in the absence of actually seeing the written amendment, we'll entertain discussion on it, but I understand where you're going. Speaker Forbes?
I want to speak in favor of this amendment, but I am also, at the same time, going to suggest to the mover of the amendment that she move it as a separate section.
I think it's probably best.
Yeah, because, because I don't think that the... Huh? I'm sorry? No, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about the two things are kind of unrelated, so I think it would be neater if it was moved as a separate section. But that's neither here nor there since she's made the discussion. I want to speak in favor of it, and I want to speak in favor of it for the following reason. I think this really does capture the essence of what the legislature is trying to do here. One of the problems with making the department suffer is that we're making an assumption that isn't necessarily true. And that assumption is that every director is consumed with concern about the status of the budget for the department they happen to be in charge of. It would be nice if that were the case. One hopes that is the case, but it ain't necessarily the case. You could have a director who just decides, you know what, I didn't make it, that's cool, what the heck. The other problem you have is you have directors of departments who recognize that the mission of their department is so important, of such overriding importance, that to penalize the department and to penalize programs in the department will penalize stakeholders in a very big way. Now, this flows from a simple concept that I realize not everybody buys, but I'll state it anyway. And that concept is that some departments are more important than other departments, some programs are more important than other programs, some things that the government does are more important than other things that the government does. And I hear a lot, people say, everything the government does is of equal importance, but that's not true. I mean, all you have to do is think for five minutes and you recognize that's not true. I'm not saying that there are departments that don't perform functions that are good, but I don't think that you could equate the saving of lives that can occur at GMH with saving energy that occurs at the Guam Energy Office. Saving energy is good. Saving life is essential. I think libraries are very important, and the new acting director is a friend of mine. And I think libraries are very important to people, but if you gave me a choice between having libraries or schools, and I'm the oversight for both, and I'd want to fight for libraries to the death, but if I had to sacrifice a school to keep a library open, I'd take the school. And who wouldn't? Because especially in this day of the internet and, you know, amazon.com and all that kind of stuff, you know, the one thing there that is critically essential is schools. And you know what? Sometimes the leaders of these departments are aware of that. They're aware that what they do is so important that if in any way, shape, or form they are interfered with, the consequences would be dire, and therefore, there's a natural reluctance on the part of people to do anything to affect that. And they bank on it. But I don't know that they'd be so cavalier or so coy or so cagey if what was at stake was not just the budget, but their own paycheck. See, because you can't finesse that. I mean, arguably, schools are the most important thing we do, but the salary of the superintendent is not the most important thing in a school, if you follow my drift. So I really like the thinking that Senator Wampat is exhibiting here. I would like to see penalties extracted. In most cases, the heads of departments and agencies are unclassified and serve at the pleasure of the governor. And although in theory, their salaries are fixed by the Haye Study, I think we've seen it amply demonstrated for many years that there is a great degree of movement theoretically within those salaries, and, you know, they really don't have the, they're really not classified. So you could, I think, without too much difficulty, have the legislature set essentially a different salary for the position without recourse to the Civil Service Commission or lord knows what else. So I think this should be done. I would like, however, to implore my colleague and my vice chair to consider making this a separate standalone section to SIPS as opposed to making it an amendment, mainly because it just doesn't, as you said, Mr. Chair, follow. It's a non sequitur. It's like amending Senator Respecho's amendment to put in something about BBMR. You know, it just doesn't make any, amendments ought to be reflective of the main motion, and I don't think this really is. So I'd like to recommend that it be moved as a separate motion.
All right. Quickly, Senator Wampat, do you want to go ahead and make a motion that's related to this at this time? Are you able to marry the two together? In effect, that's what you need to do. All right, quickly, a one-minute recess. On the amendment, there is a idea, but no amendment at this point. In the absence of that, we're still on the main amendment. On the main amendment, there's been objections. Senator Shimizu, sorry? There's been several objections. Again, clearly, there are three, at least three objections. Senator Shimizu on the amendment.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Just before I proceed, I'm speaking on behalf of the main amendment. You called for that, but you're saying that there's an objection. I'm not sure what does that do for me to talk on the main amendment if somebody objected for it?
No, I didn't tie the objection to your ability to speak. I simply said there's been objection, but I recognized you, so on the main amendment, go ahead and speak.
Okay, thank you very much. Carlos, nice to see you guys, nice to see both of you guys. I just have a question. I was under the impression that you had a copy of Rory Respecho's amendment. So let me give you about a minute just to read it, you know, and I can be speaking on it, you know, to be able to continue discussing it. But you've got the gist of it, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I came and I did a sidebar talking to you guys about that. That's when I found out, we were talking on an amendment, that you did not have a copy before you. So now that you have it, ostensibly, what this does is to be able to... Mr. Chair, can we?
Yes, sir.
No, I just don't want to keep, I want to say my piece and so that everybody will hear what I have to say without any distraction on the floor. Okay. So anyway, Carlos, what happens here is that, and I wanted to do that so you can read a little bit more on the amendment that was being discussed for quite a while before you having to see it. But ostensibly, when I did a sidebar discussion with you, basically, there is a public law that says certain reporting requirements. If you guys fail to comply with the public law, then there's an automatic deduction, right?
With the reporting requirements, sir?
Yes.
Yes.
And I understood, as I understood, that that has already come and passed in terms of the gray spirit. Am I correct? So have your office, since December, have your office complied with that law and adjusted the budget accordingly to that law that was...
As I told, I believe it was Senator Respecho, that we did not receive the auditor's report until April 10th on the non-compliance.
But you did April 10th, so April 11th did you? Today is computerized. I understand that you can automatically just do those things.
I believe there's a 15-day period where we would have to notify the agency head of his or her non-compliance and the imminent appropriation of funds.
And, but that has come and passed?
No.
You haven't done that since you had the information on hand?
We got April 10th, so I...
So on April 11th did the letter go out?
No, we're still within the 15-day notification period.
Well, you understand we're in the process. I mean, it's just a matter of a simple letter. Dear Director of so-and-so, please be advised that this is to notify you. I mean, I can dictate it, then it's out. I can even email that and it's out. And right now, it's April 19. I just want to say, can we do, have a little bit of our due diligence and get that out? That notification is a short notice, it's not a long dissertation. I would suggest that. Tomorrow's Friday, and maybe that's something that you guys can do. Would that be...
We are in the process.
Would that be, but that would be, that would be okay, right? I mean, by tomorrow, a little email notifying, just a one standard. And then once that notification has been out, what happens?
Then the deappropriation process would begin.
Okay, so if you got the letter out on the, tomorrow, then the deappropriation can commence upon receipt and you acknowledge the receipt of those things the next day?
That's correct.
Okay, so if you did that letter tomorrow, you can start maybe by first day of business, Monday. I'm just trying to get the chronology and... Now, Senator Rory Respecho's amendment, the main amendment, is basically saying that the Governor Haas Edimagalahim Guam shall not transfer funds into any government agency, blah, 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 that has violated the reporting requirements listed in Section 3. So for example, if this passed tonight, it's basically saying that we must, you know, reward at least the laws that were passed by the previous legislature, like my good friend, Senator Blas, you know, we are now looking at maybe quote-unquote, the laws of the past is now hunting us today. So if you are able to get your notice of letter out tomorrow by come business on Monday, you let them know by Monday that it's deappropriated. Is that feasible? Is that feasible?
Again, we are in the process right now, Senator, of compiling all the letters to the different entities, and they're going to be specific to their appropriations and their amounts that are going to be assessed for the appropriations. So it's quite, there's a number of appropriations for different agencies, you know, special funds. It didn't, the law wasn't specific to just general fund, it just said appropriations.
But you can give a general, you can give a general saying that, dear Director of the such-and-such agency, according to public law 28, blah, 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 you know, any funds that's under your area, you violate itself, you'll 5 percent will be cut off that, and then you can work the numbers out later. But it's only for the purposes of making compliance to the requirement of notification.
That's the other part. You are implying there's only a 5 percent, but in what our reading of the law, it appears that there's a 5 percent violation for, I mean, a 5 percent penalty for each violation of non-compliance.
Right, and the thing is that you can use general language to say, you know, if you fall in any one of these categories, this is what's going to happen. The only reason why I'm saying that, Mr. Chair, is that to comply with the notification, just the notice. The law says you make that notification, and it doesn't have to be made as complicated as it seems to be. You just notify them that you may be in any one of these categories, you can work, so that you will be able to now go to your department, and each analyst is assigned to different direct departments, right? So each analyst will be able to look at their agencies and boom, you know what I'm saying? So what this amendment does is to say, look, comply with the laws, whether I agree with it or not, you must comply with that law. You have, you know, as the appointing authority to enforce the laws, and if you don't, you come in and talk to, and say, amend that law and take that out. But until such time, that is the law of the land, and I would hope that we, you know, pay, you know, do respect to the law. I mean, I like it, but that's the law. I have to respect the law and I have to carry out the law because that's the mandate, that's why we are called, or you're called, or the agency appointing authority. You have the authority to implement as given by the people of Guam to you. So in this particular case, Carlos, if you do that, a part of the notification and your, all your different budget analysts by each of the agency, they interact, they know, they know what will be the cuts, okay? You need to do that. You must comply with the law. And I'm asking you guys to comply with the law with due diligence because, you know, to say, I just got the notice from the public order does not necessarily relieve us of that responsibility, but since you did get the notice anyway, and it still hasn't been done, I'm imploring on you to please process and move this alone. And that is something that you need to do. And the reason why I'm saying that is because here is an amendment before this body, and we have to make another amendment, and I hope again it doesn't, it's more punitive again to come back, but you know, if the laws are being disregarded, this body is always coming back to react, to correct those things. Let's work together in that regard. So this amendment is saying that we don't want to have that head frame that, that's okay, I am going, I'm not going to deduct it as the director of BBMR in terms of my analyst, because maybe they'll just forgive us. But until such time, that this body does not amend that law, that is the law of the land. And this is... And this is saying that you're not going to just skirt the law of the land by having a backdoor transfer to cover the non-compliance of the law. Because even if that transfer was put in, it is still the violation. It does not remove...
Senator Shimizu?
I'm just waiting to act if I can have the... I just wanted to, if I can have the sidebar, because my, I'm trying to concentrate on discussions. Okay.
Senator Shimizu, on the amendment?
I am on the amendment, but I would like to have a little decorum here too, because I keep quiet. On the amendment, what I'm trying to say, that irregardless of this amendment or forgiven, is still the law. Even if they backdoor in a money to cover the shortfall, you still have not complied with the law. You still have to do that. That cannot be allowed to cover up that shortfall, because it was not complied. The law was not complied. I just want to just say that, so that until it is forgiven, and that's why this will prevent the opportunities for us to have some sort of creative ways of going back and rewarding non-compliance of the law, because it absolutely does not in my mind. And my good friend, John Pangolin, said there, but there's nothing to transfer. So therefore, you would have no objection to Senator Roy's amendment. But to say that maybe we'll just wait, and then let's get, we'll transfer into that shortfall, it does not negate the fact that it is non-compliant. Thank you very much, Senator, and I support this amendment.
On the amendment, again, there have been objections raised. We'll call for the vote. As many as are in favor, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, I need Speaker Ben in here.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but earlier you said that there were several objections. I didn't hear an objection.
There's been a objection raised by Senators Izaki, Senator Calvo, Senator Lohan, if I recall correctly. Or was it Senators Izaki, Elise, and Senator Calvo?
It's one thing to give a presentation, but unless there's an objection...
Again, as many as are in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, motion fails. We will take a break and come back at 7:30 for, for dinner. Committee whole will be in recess. All right, committee whole is back in order. In the interest of time, in the order to be able to facilitate discussion, we're going to set a five-minute rule for each member on any motion. So, and that is exclusive of the response from persons here or other questions posed to members on the floor, so...
On your rule, does this question, does that violate our standing rules?
No.
Because if it does, then you know, you can make a proper motion to, you know, make sure that...
Yeah.
You know, because that, nobody can just say, today, this is the way the rule is going to be, especially when it comes to deliberation, that makes sure...
You have five minutes to be able to pose your questions, and of course, your time will stop at the point that you relinquish the floor or the mic and goes to the person here. We're not going to include the time for the response. So you have five minutes to speak.
As long as we don't violate our own standing rules on deliberation. Thank you, sir.
If you can find any citation that speaks to violation of the standing rule, I'll...
I wanted to double-check, because I have the rules I could check.
Go ahead, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right. Senator Calvo, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, we've gone through several weeks of deliberation on Bill Number 74. We've, we've dispensed with many proposals put forth by the administration when it comes to revenue enhancement. Though, of course, we, we did not allow for the increase of the GRT. There has been significant moves over the past several days in revising the fee schedule for many departments for, when it comes to services. Of course, there's also been revisions in the Dave Santos Act. And obviously, with every change and every amendment made, it changes the bottom-line figure in terms of revenue. So I guess the first question I'd like to do, and I'd like to bring out members of the administration, the whole fiscal policy team, I want to, again, thank you, Ms. Perez. You've been, again, very helpful to the legislative body. But I'd like to bring representatives also from the BBMR and the other agencies in the fiscal policy team of the governor to explain where we're at as a result of these changes in the, in the fee structures and exemptions on taxes.
Lou?
I'll, I'll go ahead and begin while I wait for, I must do want to wait for... I know Mr. Loggins is just outside coming in.
And also, BBMR, Mr. Chairman, I hate, I hate to have to keep requesting this, but it should be standard. Invite BBMR, bring them in, and let them be part of the process.
Okay, point taken. Sergeant Lawrence, please ensure that the BBMR representative makes his way into the chamber. At this time, of course, Senator Calvo relinquished the mic. Lou, would you go ahead and respond to the question?
Okay, I refer to the three-page sheet that was passed earlier. And you'll note that there are several different columns there, and the, what we did in these is that we identified the adopted levels of the two public laws that became the budget laws. We applied the 5% appropriation reduction based on non-compliance. And you'll see that there are some there where there were no adjustments, and those were primarily for those programs like MIP, COLA, supplemental annodities. Those were not, I believe they were not adjusted for, just like in our original Bill 74. And so these adjustments were primarily for operations, departmental operations. So on the, on the third page is where you'll have, and we're prepared to continue to keep a running total as, as, as things progress throughout this process. We now have a revised appropriation level here, request of $474,967,026. The revenues so far that has been discussed, and I don't know if the word adopted is the right word to use. It's the first week into the committee as a whole, but we're looking at $453,733,719, giving us a variance or a shortfall of $21,233,306. Since then, it's been determined that there were certain amounts that were inadvertently not taken into account in Bill 74, so those were added back in the GTA proceeds of $1,450,995 dormant accounts totaling $1,667,537. The projected funds that will be generated with the amendment on the Dave Santos Amendment last night, that would generate for the, for the last five months of the fiscal year, 3.5 million. Department of Land Management fees of $1,779,192. The fees the Department of Revenue and Taxation presented before the body two days ago, $2,700,000 for the rest of the fiscal year. GPD fees of $182,571, and then the real property amnesty.
Yeah.
Of $5 million, so giving us a, still a net shortfall of $4.9 million.
And obviously, we've had discussions that 5% reduction or deappropriation is actually the very conservative number, because obviously, if you go to the letter of the law, there are some agencies that would get much, much greater reductions. And obviously, I'm going to have some amendments later on to, to, to deal with really what the spirit of, of the law was. And again, we're not here to penalize, but to, to ensure that management is accountable. I do have a question, but on the revenues. You, these numbers that you've noted for the, for the Dave Santos, the fees for land management, reven tax, and GPD... By the way, where's Guam Fire Department? Where's Fire Department? Is it here? Is Fire Department, did you add the...
Yeah, I think the fire goes to the flame. It's a special.
Oh, special one. Okay, oh, yeah, there you go. The, on these, the fees that we show here, and the, and the revisions on the Dave Santos Act. Now, you've mentioned that that would be for five, for the remaining five months of the fiscal year, right? So that, in order for these numbers to take into, these numbers to be accurate, we would have to start the implementation of all fee revisions as well as the exemptions on the Dave Santos and the ceilings to go downward as of May 1st. Now, May, June, July, August, yeah. Now, there is an issue here, because for the past few days, you'll note that there have, there have been different proposals that have come up to the body, each one that were drafted separately from differing agencies. So even the language was, was different as to implementation date. And there has been, in fact, there was discussion just earlier today about reasonable public notification time, and then, of course, implementation date, and allowing for certain, you know, for the public, for the agencies as well as the public to prepare. And gosh, if I can recall, one, one senator mentioned June 1st. And if there was to be an implementation of June 1st for, for these revised fee schedules, as well as the changings of the ceilings on the, on the Dave Santos Act, then the numbers would actually go downward a bit. So if, I wonder if you can do a quick calculation for me? If, if we were to, if it were to start June 1st, what, what would we be looking at? And maybe you guys can calculate that. But what would we look at in terms of the actual proceeds from these different schedules if there is an enactment date of June 1st?
Senators, your, your particular question specific to the...
Actually, what's happened, and then this has been the general discussion. We haven't voted on anything, and there hasn't been an amendment made. Actually, you're right. There is some, there is language in one of the provisions that says May 1st, and then there's another one that says 60 days upon enactment. So I'm, I'm just wondering, if this was all as of May 1st?
2.3 million. 2.3.
Okay.
The 3.5 is for five months, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so rather than a five-month period, just a four-month period, so... I'm sorry?
It's due in July, July 20th.
Yeah. Also, it'd be?
It would be three months.
So the, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. The impact, so the numbers would change?
If you make it effective in June, it's due in July, so it starts July, August, September. It's three months.
Okay, the collections. Okay, so how does it change the numbers?
For which one? Yeah. It's, for the Dave Santos, it's 1.7.
So 1.7 for Dave Santos?
1.75.
1.0, okay, 1.75. All businesses, June, June 1st is the actual, isn't that for business renewals?
For business license, but for, for Dave Santos, the Dave Santos Act. It'll be July.
Yeah. I know, Speaker, you brought up a good point. I'm just saying, that was, that was discussions brought up earlier today. But, yeah. Actually, the Speaker is giving me that look of, oh, my goodness. You know, there would obviously be a major impact. Okay, anyway, do your calculations, but I guess to the, to, you know, members of the body, we have not, we have not acted on the, on the implementation date. So with that not acting in the implementation date, obviously, that, you know, we must take into consideration the impact if there's a delay.
Can you have about a minute left?
I don't have an amendment at this point. Anyway, that's the questions I have at this point.
Very good, Senator. You've used about four minutes of your time. By the way, if any member would like to extend their time to any one of the speakers, you, you have the privilege of doing that. Any next speaker?
Just, just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. The only, on the committee of the whole, you can set the time, then you can come back to, if there's, you know, if everybody already talked, then you can come back to that person that wants to say something again. So you can still, you know, put him in the five, five-minute limit.
Yeah, the, the purpose for a time limit is to try to get to the root of the discussion, and that's why we set the five, five-limit, time limit.
But the purpose of the rules is so that we have rules to follow, and the rules are fairly, fairly clear with regards to the, the ability to come back.
Next speaker? Senator Respecho.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So as it stands now, you've quantified what a 5% appropriation would, reduction would mean based on the deappropriation, automatic deappropriation of 5%? And this leaves us, I, I just have a question here. Is it legisla, is this $5 million for the real property amnesties that that's obviously still in? At one point, I couldn't follow whether or not this was taken out. This is probably why Chairman Calvo and I, our spreadsheets aren't reconciling, and I think it's this $5 million figure. Isn't this $5 million part of the, because I asked for reven tax. How, what is the total dollar amount that you're going to be expected to collect within the next five or six months? And the response I got several weeks ago was $30 million. And then the response from that was, it was from the GRT and income tax amnesty programs, right, Director Loggins?
Right.
This real property amnesty of $5 million, is that still on the table?
Yes, it is, but it doesn't, by law, it's supposed to go to the TEFF.
So why are we capturing that as something that can alleviate a $5 million impact to the General Fund?
We have language in the Bill, Senator Uspishio, that for, just for the purposes of this amnesty, that any taxes collected prior to, or real property taxes for 2005 and earlier, and that will be deposited into the General Fund, just for this purpose this year.
Okay, and can you help me clarify, thought that, did you have a follow-up, Mr. Speaker?
No, just a point of information. Lou, we understand that language was in there, but it was stricken out, and it still goes into the TEFF. But of course, it's still available to be appropriated by the legislature, but the language is out.
So based on the current landscape of Bill 74, we don't have access to this, or the General Fund can't access this $5 million unless there's a subsequent amendment to do that?
That's correct. It needs to be appropriated.
We've asked, we've asked somebody, whether it's the legislative branch or the executive branch, to provide an update on where we're at. So is it safe right now to cross that $5 million, and now our, the gap is 9.9 million? Because I, as of now, because many members want to know, where are we at now? I understand that decisions still have to made, be made with respect to whether or not we're going to fully comply with the 5% deappropriation. Earlier, I lacked one vote to get my amendment through, to prevent the Governor from having any transfer authorities into these agencies. So for purposes of some kind of process, and so we're on the same page, I would take that $5 million out for now, and just say that the shortfall is 9.954. The other question I have is, maybe you can help me clarify this. This GTA proceeds, this dormant account, I thought that these were, there was an amendment by the gentleman from Baragada to earmark these funds to, to save, I, maybe he can give a point of information?
Yes, the GTA proceeds account was appropriated to restore the 2.5% cuts to the agencies, to specific agencies like the Library, Revan Tax, Public Defender, the Mayor's Council, and Attorney General. But then that's reflected in your appropriation level 495, the full amount. So it does offset each other. But they have been specifically appropriated to that.
But you don't capture this as a $1.4 million available to, to try to bring this budget to some kind of balance, right?
No, I think you would, because, because we're still, those, the increase in the appropriation level on, on the expenditure side is being funded by this. So yeah, no, it's proper for the purpose of deciding a shortfall to count this.
Well, that's because the 2.5% is out of the equation. Correct. Mr. Chairman, could I reserve the balance of my time?
Of course.
To give others an opportunity to have, what's the balance of my time, Mr. Chairman?
You have three minutes.
About four and a half minutes?
I'm sorry. There's no such thing as balance of time.
Why are you sorry? I asked the question, he said.
Well, I would defer to the senior Senator, who is a far longer-serving Senator than I am.
They can come back to you later on, Senator.
All right. So, you have three minutes, you have three minutes left, if you'd like to use them. All right. Senator Uspishio, thank you. Senator Shimizu.
Hi. No, first of all, Lou and the folks, I want to thank you for, you know, putting this thing together in a short period of time. At least it gave us an opportunity to clear out all of our amendments as to what we wanted to do. So I want to thank you again for that. But the bottom line, as I look at this breakdown, it's almost agency by agency, and then at the end is your summarization by branches and instrumentalities, or, and then down in the bottom, you have a $21 million deficit. After you run all your tallies, is that $21 million deficit, or balance, or negative balance?
That's the negative balance, or the shortfall from the revenues.
From the revenue. So there, there's still a $21 million shortfall, shortage, as it relates to current appropriations on the current budget. My understanding is that we are, the Governor sent over a bill to be able to do a number of things to amend the current budget, right? And we're working on the budget now to see if we can have a balanced budget. But when you put all the revenues coming in, based upon the different scenarios, we still come up to a shortage of $21 million? Is that what you're saying?
Twenty-one, yes, before the, those items right below it, as potential.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
It is $21 million short from the revenues that were discussed, and were, I don't know what the term is, temporarily approved.
Yeah, we were, yeah. The revenue enhancements that were put before us in fees and?
That's right.
And what's that, and all the other cost enhancement. But even with all of that, we started doing that since Monday, and finally crunched the numbers, it's still short $21 million.
I know, we would have to subtract from that, the, those items below it.
Okay, so then, you bring in, like I said, the GTA proceeds of $1 million, the dormant account of $1,660,000. What's a dormant account that's, has $1 million, 1.6 million? If you just give me a?
Those are funds that have been, that are in some of the smaller special funds, cumulatively, together, that have been, through the budget law, we were, they were there to be closed, and whatever balances they have go to the General Fund.
Lou, do you have a listing of that? I'm not asking you at this moment.
No, there is a list.
I sure like to see that sleeping account of $1.6 million. I want to know, so I can wake him up, and maybe do something with it that will be productive, and, you know, especially in some of the things I would like to do, especially in the areas of healthcare. So if we can, you know, just a point of information, 1.6 million, it's almost $2 million, quite frankly. And then we have the Dave Santos, which was, what's that, amended last night. Is that reflective of what was passed from Senator Frank Blas'?
It also depends on when the, the date that we're going to implement the Dave Santos repeal. So if it's going to be May 1st, then it's, or June 1st, the payment, the due date of these taxes would be July, so that's only three months. So it's half of what that amount is showing here.
This is only for three months?
No, no. If we're going to, it depends on when?
Let's say this is enacted before the end of the week, and the implementation date, effective date, quite frankly, you computed 3.5 from, you're right, it depends, but where do we come with the 3.5?
When we, when we computed the 3.5, it was based on six months.
All the way to the end of the fiscal year?
Right.
More or less, yeah. Okay. So that's what we anticipate on having in. And then, of course, you have the increase in the Department of Land Management?
Yes.
Yeah, so just as a result of that quick approval, Department of Land Management, we yield 1.7 additional?
Yes.
Or, okay, an additional 1.7. Then the other one is the Department of Revenue Taxation, all of the fees that you had presented to us?
The fees from Revan Tax for business license should may, probably remain the same, because it's not due till June 1st. So if, if the date was June 1st, it's effective immediately, and we would start charging the new, the new fees for business license.
Right. But that's only in business, there's a whole array of other, I think you had a fairly thick package, so you computed that, and that came up again to 2.7.
Right.
That's an additional, new money, at least projected increase. And then the GPD, this is just the regular. I don't know if we passed any new fees at that time, I'm not sure. So it's 182. Now, the real property tax amnesty, that's $5 million on real property tax?
Yes.
Okay. And cumulatively, from GTA to, to real property tax, about five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, maybe about 15, we have generated, at least in paperwork that we're doing today, about $15 million?
Seven, seven.
Because then, even if you include that, you come about another $5 million, too shortfall.
Right.
I'm just running it round figures, I'm not, you know. So we're, even with those additional revenue enhancement, we still have a shortfall of about $5 million. We still have about $5 million. Now, this body has not gotten up yet in the Committee of the House, so I saw some amendments around here. There's still a number of amendments that were revenue generating, you know, that was, I think, being proposed by the administration, and just for somebody to move that amendment. You know what I'm talking about, in terms of, I think, the different types of exemptions that was passed out here earlier. I saw that on my desk. If that went through, for example, more or less, would, what do you, just estimate would have been the, the?
If, if all the exemptions were?
You know, the ones that's here, it was, I think it was being passed around, you know, and we're not there yet. Maybe when the night ends, you know, that might surface. That's all the exemptions. But what would, being part of the administration, what did you compute would have been the revenue enhancement from that? Particular piece of amendment that would deal with exemptions?
I think it was close to, if we looked at all the exemptions?
Yes.
Close to 30, probably $30 million.
So if what was being discussed yesterday, or put on our desk, that, that there is going to be a potential amendment, I don't know if the mover is going to move on that. But even with that, I would put it down to 20 million, I'll just knock off 10 million. Then you will have a surplus, right? If 30 million came in, and your shortfall is 5 million, then you might have a surplus of 25. Is that, am I getting that correct?
If the numbers add up, your line of thinking is correct.
My line of thinking, of course, even if I divide it in half, right, you said 30 million, and I said, just make it 15, we will still have a surplus of 10 million.
Yes.
I would just knock off, and even if I knocked off another 5 million, or whatever, there will still be a surplus, if that amendment that was being proposed earlier is acted on. So for now, we still have a projected cash shortfall of $5 million. But the potentials are there to remove that and have a working surplus. Point of order, Mr. Speaker, how long is your five minutes?
The, as a matter of fact, Mr. Speaker?
I'm right on time.
He just passed the five-minute mark.
Thank you.
And remember that I'm stopping this as the response is?
That's fine, I'm done already. I made my point that, down the numbers, down to five minutes, I will surely be taking my stopwatch also. Thank you.
All right. I am keeping time. Again, I suspend it when the, when the Speaker stops speaking. All right. Next Speaker? Oh, I'm sorry, Senator Guthridge, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And welcome back to the Administrative Representatives. Thank you for being so patient with all that's happened over the last few weeks. Now, looking at your, your document that you prepared for us tonight, and some of the things that have happened, particularly yesterday with the changes to the Dave Santos Act, tonight also, there's a possibility we may consider, as Senator Shimizu said, repealing the special interest tax exemptions that have been extended to certain industries. This includes different industries that are defined by law. This, in fact, if this happens, would be a dramatic change for the government. And although Dr. Shimizu, Senator Shimizu, referenced it with reference to how it would impact the shortfall, I would like to ask you, Mr. Loggins, if you could please help educate not just us, but with the public who are watching the proceedings tonight. How would the repeal of the special interest tax exemptions benefit this government, together with the now-reduced exemptions for the Dave Santos Act combined? What would be the long-term benefit of those actions to the government of Guam, and hence the people of Guam?
I think the biggest help, especially in my department, is my refunds. That's $30 million that can go into paying back the people of Guam. The main reason why John and I, and my department feels that exemptions should be eliminated, is you got to tax people fairly. Everybody gets the same treatment. There shouldn't be an exemption for one person, and the next person next to him has to, has to pay.
I agree with your assessment, and I think, should, should the legislature, this evening or early this morning, act on the proposed repeal of the exemptions, coupled with the Dave Santos cutoff change, change we made yesterday, that our people can expect quicker tax returns, perhaps even quicker EITC refunds, tax refunds. And ultimately, that money will be circulating in the community, in the business community, and benefit everyone. So I, I'm hopeful that tonight, we will see that happen, because that will complete the intent of what we've been doing the last four weeks, which is to try to find a way to balance the budget, deal with the shortfall, but will also help contribute to a long-term fiscal improvement in the government of Guam. Am I right, Mr. Loggins?
That is correct. That is very correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there any other Speakers? All right. If there are none, Senator Uspishio? I'm sorry. Okay, Senator Pangolin, then.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just have, like, one really fundamental question to the administration, and whoever can speak on behalf of the administration. We came in here four weeks ago, and you presented a budget to deal with the financial crisis and the bleak economic conditions that we have, and you fought for and argued for a 2.5% reduction in the operating cost of this government, and articulated that any reduction beyond that will greatly hamper the ability of this government to deliver the services to the people. And tonight, you come in and present a 5% reduction. And tonight, you come in and present a 5% reduction, uh, and don't even seem to be concerned about doubling the reduction in the operating budgets of the departments and agency. Um, are you serious about this 5% reduction? And I guess, you know, art, that's, I'll just, it's not directed at you. You're a department head in this case and not a representative of the administration. And I guess it would be BBMR, Carlos. Is the governor, in fact, serious about this reduction of 5%? Or is it the same kind of, you know, PowerPoint presentation where he says he is reducing his salary by 20%? He is reducing all members of his cabinet by 20%? He has ordered the reduction of 10% of all classified employees? All of this was supposed to have been done six weeks ago. None of it has been done today. And then now you come in and present this $21 million reduction. Is he going to implement it? Is he serious about it? Or are we here to try and find an alternative to the 5%? Is that what you're asking this body to do?
I believe, um, uh, we are, uh, serious about, uh, implementing the 5% reduction. We, we will, uh, take those necessary steps to live within whatever, um, um, level that, uh, that is given to us. Um, I know that the two and a half percent, uh, the agencies, um, some agencies said that they could not, uh, live within that level, but, uh, we'll take the necessary action to, to live within our means.
Is he serious about this in the same way that he said he's reducing his salary? Has the governor reduced his salary by 20%?
There have been, uh, staff in the governor's office and-
Has the governor and the lieutenant governor, as in this presentation right here, say dated FYO budget? And, um, let's see. Reduced spending, executive order 2007 dash two, governor's directive. It says, implement up to a 20% reduction in the salaries of the governor, the lieutenant governor, all cabinet and staff. Has that happened at all?
It, it has happened with, uh, s- some unclassified employees with the governor's office and the, uh, and the lieutenant governor's office.
So, but the governor and lieutenant governor themselves have not taken that?
I, I believe, um, uh, there was some, um, issue with regards to their salaries being set by law and, uh, with, um, not being able to adjust it.
Okay. How about all cabinet and staff, as it says here? It didn't say some, it said all.
Uh, that has not been effectuated.
Okay, then the other one says, in addition, he has ordered, not will order, will consider ordering, is serious about ordering. It says, he has ordered a 10% reduction in the salaries of all other unclassified employees funded by the general fund. Did he do that?
It has been implemented with some unclassified employees, not all.
So he's halfway serious, if he's halfway implemented it. I, I just can't understand, you know, the, the kind of just lackadaisical approach to this. I mean, I really am, you know, trying to work with, uh, with all this whole process. I mean, God knows, I've been in here almost every single day and I'll probably end up making more amendments than anybody in this bill, you know, to try and work it. But I mean, it just baffles me that, you know, we can go fro- in four weeks, we can go from, we cannot work with more than a 2.5% reduction to, we're fine with a 5% reduction, we'll work with it. You know, I just, it, it just, that huge swing in attitude over the financial exigency that we face, you know, is, is, um, leads me to believe that there's something else missing in this whole equation that the governor's not being forthright with. It's kinda like, you know, we're gonna reduce employment, we're gonna freeze hiring, then we find, uh, the switch in the employees, you know, shifting them from one department to the other to just make it appear like we're doing something. So I, I don't know what it is. I really honestly do know, do not know what it is, but I just don't have, you know, can't find it in my gut to feel that we're serious about this thing and that the plan that the governor's presenting is serious. Believe me, you know, if there's any place I could, should be able to find it, it's in my gut, 'cause my guts pretty big. You know, there's a lot of room to look for, so I've been there. But I just can't find that, that feeling, you know, of, that urgency, the seriousness of it, you know, and, and, um, just how, how we're approaching this thing. Uh, and to just go from 2.5 will cripple us to 5% is okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, you're welcome. Speaker Forbes?
Um, I'm gonna kinda take a look at the big picture here a little bit, okay? We got Senator Pangolino who's very good at, at looking at the details, Senator Calvo. But I'm kinda looking at some of the bottom line stuff here. Basically, and, and there's no criticism here, okay, guys? I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just trying to get a handle on this. When you came to us, um, four-plus weeks ago with the bill. Carlos, you did have something to do with writing this, right? Four, four some weeks ago, this bill? I mean, you are the fiscal policy team, you're part of it anyway, so. When you came before us, the essence of the bill was that you were asking the Guam legislature to authorize $477 million, I believe, something in that neighborhood, in spending for FY 2007. Um, you did not have room in that bill, nor did you ask for any additional spending authority beyond that $477 million. Part of that $477 million was predicated on a 1% gross receipts tax increase. The body was not inclined to increase the gross receipts tax by 1% because of the regressive effect it would have on everyone. But you guys came back with counter proposals having to do with fees and having to do with Dave Santos, uh, exemption and things of that nature, which, which the body has, you know, at this juncture left in the bill. With modifications and with amendments. And as a result of that, based on your presentation tonight, you set the revenues now that the bill will, uh, provide at $469 million, all right? Is that pretty accurate so far, what I just said? I think the presentation, it comes to $469 million in total revenues. Yeah, the 453 plus the additional effect. So were this bill to pass in its current form, you would have $469 million in spending authority and change. Not a dime more, not a dime less. You'd have $469 million in spending authority. I'm stressing spending authority because, um, and it took me a long time to get, get my arms around this too. Unless you have your budgets, it, it really is giving permission to spend, 'cause it's all perspective. Cash becomes your concern, Carlos, as the BBMR person and, and, uh, revenue taxes concern and especially Lou's concern over at DOA. The legislature has no ability to involve itself in cash management truly because we are neither the custodian and custodians nor the recorders of cash receipts. So were the bill to pass in its current form, all the permission you'd have to spend is 469, which is not that, not that much less than 477, if you think about it. It's a basically, actually maybe able to lessen it, given the small change part of that. So between seven and eight million bucks difference. Here's the thing. On the expenditure side, the expenditures have been cut more drastically with the application of the 5% across the board that, that currently is on the table here than they were in the original Bill 74. The original Bill 74 only had 2.5% cuts, right? And they didn't apply to every single department and agency, GPSS was spared, okay? And so, you know, I note that even though we're cutting expenditures, should it pass in this form, much more than the original Bill 74 did, and since the revenues contained here are actually fairly close to the original revenues that you guys anticipated, to, to just kinda put, put a face on it, the bill you sent us, Bill 74, could not possibly have been a balanced budget. I mean, the expenditures in Bill 74 as originally presented legislature had to be much higher than 477 if after we incorporate these pretty large cuts, much larger than were originally contained in 74, if we still have about a five, six million dollar variance that we have to make up. Now, I only point that out so that we recognize the dilemma that faces us. Because 74 really wasn't balanced when it was presented to us, it's not a question of just fine tuning where y'all wanted us to raise revenue and where we were willing to raise revenue and the fact that there might be a few dollars difference. Because the cuts are so much more severe and there's still a $5 million gap to make up, we don't only have to make up for the variance in decisions, we have to make up for it was essentially a structural deficit in Bill 74 when it was presented. And I'm not gonna put you on the spot by asking you to respond to that. What I, what I, what I want, guys, is I want your help here because, um, you know, there may be people here who, who aren't too thrilled about a 5% across the board cut to every single department. There may be a senator here who thinks that maybe, you know, the department of X, Y, and Z shouldn't get five, it should get 2.5, but, but what we're gonna need is we're gonna need some more, uh, some more ideas from you guys about how to make up that $5 million difference. Because there's clearly a $5 million difference and, you know, um, can you take cuts, uh, beyond 5% in some areas? If you can't, then what do we do? Now, what's not on the table is going back to a 1% GRT increase. But I just wanna make it clear that it's not because we didn't pass the 1% GRT that we are in this condition. There had to have been, when the bill was presented, a deficit built into the bill. Or else these cuts should have easily taken care of the five, six, seven million dollar difference between 469 and, or I'm sorry, the seven or eight million dollar difference between 469 and change and 477 and change. Because these additional cuts certainly are adding a lot more than seven or eight million bucks to the reduction and expenditure side of the equation, right? So, uh, you know, I mean, we can continue this conversation for a while, but ultimately, we're gonna wind up at that point. While people are asking you questions and while there's discussion, and again, I'm not saying this to be accusatory or to be a problem. We really need to put our thinking caps together or put our thinking caps on. Because obviously, the, what we need to make up is, is, uh, needs to be made up. Must be made up. Because I know you don't want us to pass a bill that's... Even though the bill that was presented to us contained, uh, was not balanced, I know you really don't want us to pass an unbalanced bill, right? Would that be an accurate statement? Okay. All right, so, um, you know, while the discussion continues here, I think people gotta be thinking about, about that number. And, uh, how to make it up. And again, right down, there's only two ways to make it up, either revenues go up or costs go down. Oh, one last thing. Uh, off, off camera here, I have spoken to some of you folks about the question that Senator Pangolino raised, 'cause I was curious about it too. And I, I did ask, I said, I was even a little bit more specific. I said, if you take 5% cuts in all these agencies, are you gonna have to furlough anybody? And I was told, no. So is, is that accurate? You can absorb the 5% cuts in the line departments and agencies that are under your purview, Carlos, and not have to furlough anybody?
I think it, uh, it, it would depend a lot on, um, what, uh, transpires with, with-
Don't talk to me about cash.
No, 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 no.
Right now, what I'm interested in is if we pass this-
Right.
The way it is. I mean, I, look, you guys only cut the legislature 2.5%. Does that mean I expect that you're gonna give me all the cash that's associated with that, uh, that appropriation? I mean, when this is all over, I'm gonna sit down with y'all and have a, a heart-to-heart conversation and say, can I really s- expect to see this kinda cash? Because if I can't, I don't care what's appropriate to Guam legislature, we're gonna base our spending on what we're likely to get from you guys in cash.
Right.
But outside, but I don't want right now to get into a prospective cash conversation. I presume that your very, very, very tight 434, uh, uh, adjustment on the revenues from 457 is already reflective of that. Would that be accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. So we don't need to go down that road anymore. What I need to hear is, kinda on the record, if you can absorb a 5% cut in the line departments and agencies that you have a purview over, Carlos, can you do so without a furlough? Assuming that your assumptions about revenue are accurate, assuming that your assumptions about the reduction in expenditures are accurate, assuming those two things are true, tell me if you can. I hope you can.
I, I, I believe, uh, we, we can and we will, um, Mr. Speaker.
Just wanted to get it on, on the record. So, so you guys can do this without, without furlough. And then, you know, while the other questions are going, I'm sorry, I know I've gone over the two minutes, but, but, you know, while the other questions are going, I really beg of you, I ask you, please, let's, let's think here because we have a, uh, an $8 million number that, or something, six, I don't know what it is anymore, but we have a number here that we're gonna have to address.
Senator Lohan?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, I, I want to, um, expound on, on what, um, former Speaker Pangolino had, uh, was talking about in regards to the, um, reduced spending, uh, section on, uh, the state of the government finances. Uh, Carlos, you had, you had said that the governor was serious about his reduced spending measures?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. And he has ordered 10% reduction in salaries on all unclassified employees funded by the general fund? Has that happened? He has ordered that, right? So upon his order, was that, was that carried, carried through?
No, as I, uh, told, uh, Senator Pangolino, that, uh, some unclassified employees have been adjusted.
Okay. Now, some classified employees have been reduced by 10% or 20%? Because there's a difference between their staff at the governor's office, calls for the governor, lieutenant governor, all cabinet and staff at the governor's office to be reduced by 20%, and the unclassified employees by the general fund, uh, funded by the general fund, the reduction of 10%. So which was, which was done?
Some of the, uh, governor's office staff and lieutenant governor's office staff have received a 10% reduction.
Okay, but, but he said 20% on that, on the governor's office side. So all cabinet and staff, it says, implement up to 20% reduction in salaries of the lieutenant governor, or governor, lieutenant governor, all cabinet and staff. So the 10% reduction was done in the governor's staff, governor, lieutenant governor's staff, right? 10% as opposed to what he had said by 20%, right?
That's right.
Okay. Has the 10% then been, been, uh, been reduced in the other unclassified employees, I guess, funded by the general fund?
No.
No. So it's just the governor's office that took a 10% sum, have taken a 10% reduction as opposed to a 20% reduction as he said he was gonna do, right?
That's right.
Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, you had said that the governor was also serious about his reduction on, on 20% on his salary and lieutenant governor's salary? Said he was serious about that, but there was, there was a glitch?
Uh, apparently, then, when they, um, were in the process of, um, implementing it, they, the, um, governor and lieutenant governor's salaries set by law, so.
Okay, so they were ready to implement it, right?
Right.
But the law prohibited from doing that. So you know what? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, you know, had a new section to implement that by law. Being that they were ready to implement it, but law, but law did not allow them to implement what they wanted to implement, the 20% reduction. Because they were ready to implement that, but law stated that by statute, there's a certain salary that the governor, lieutenant governor must, uh, must adhere to. Uh, but in preparing the implementation of the 20% reduction, statute prevented that from happening. So I'd like to offer a new amendment, basically, to- So I'd like to offer a new amendment, basically to enable, because the governor, lieutenant governor, we're ready to do it. Ready to do it, but because there was statute that said that, uh, that, uh, it does not permit them. So I'd like to offer an amendment, actually, to add a new, a section, since they were ready to do it, to, again, um, reduce the governor, lieutenant governor's salary by twenty percent.
Would you object to allowing the other members to speak on it while you're drafting your amendment?
The governor spoke already, he said he was ready to do it, but the law prevented him doing it.
Write, write your amendment and then...
Sure.
We'll act on it.
Sure, absolutely.
Senator Minko, you're recognized.
Oh, can somebody, uh, perhaps just explain to us, really, uh, the, the way, you know, the documents that we have in front of us right now have a five million dollar shortfall, cash shortfall, right? Or five million dollars should just shortfall, uh, revenue wise, or... Okay, can, can somebody now explain to us what is the plan, or plans of the administration to accommodate this and, and to, uh, alleviate the fear now of, uh, the problem that would come about if, you know, if, if, if we pass this or if we don't pass this? So can you just give us an overall plan in terms of what the administration would do if we pass what we got right now? Take into account that we still have a five million dollar shortfall, cash shortfall? Uh, anybody can answer, you know, you know, Carlos, perhaps because you're the BBMR Director?
If you were to pass a level that, uh, was consistent with the, um, with the revenue number, the revised revenue number, then we would, uh, we would work with that number. So if it was, uh, four sixty-nine that you would pass in the law, then four sixty-nine is what we would, uh, work with in terms of, um, appropriation, assuming that, uh, you, you pass the budget where revenues and appropriations are, uh, the same amount.
I'm, I'm, I'm willing really to, to give you my entire five minutes, so you can give us a really, uh, uh, an explanation as to, you know, what are some of the detailed plans that you guys have now? And I'm sure that since you, you know, like was mentioned earlier, you have, uh, that PowerPoint presentation, then maybe you can expand on that now with what we got here. Because at the, before we, we, when you first came here, the shortfall was really unimaginable, right? But now that we have sort of narrowed it down, now give us, you know, a scenario, your plans, just to, uh, what are you gonna do to accommodate the shortfall or, you know, to, to balance the budget that we have right now? Could you give us at least some detailed plans that the, the governor has given you or you have advised the governor? That you can discuss publicly or the public should know or we should know? Because I'm, I'm kind of afraid to, you know, still the document in front of us?
Yes, are you talking, sir, in terms of...
I'm talking about the overall now, okay? We, you have, you have the document in front of you, the three-page document.
Yes.
Right? So, Carlos, all I want is, so, I'm sure you've been talking about it and to how you can have a remedial effect with what we have right now. Because when, it's true, you know, you came here to, before, for a PowerPoint presentation that you cut everybody at twenty percent, which is, you know, nice, and I, I applaud the governor for that. But now that we have already worked on the budget for four weeks, can you just give us now that we have cut it down to at least five million dollars, four point nine?
Right.
Boy, I'm spending a lot of my time asking the same question over and over again.
Yes, sir, Senator, that, a- as I, as I said, that if, um, uh, the appropriation level that you, that is ultimately passed with this bill is, uh, consistent with the revenue amount of four sixty-nine, then, um, that will be the amount that we will, we will, uh, operate with. Because that will be the amount that is, we are authorized to spend. Now, if that entails, um, um, any action with regards to, um, furlough, I, at this point, I, I would not, um, I, I would think that we would be able to, to, um, try and live within, take the necessary steps to live within that four sixty-nine with any, with regards to, and, uh, of course, it's always been our last, um, uh, resort to, to, um, resort to any type of furlough. And that's always been the position, so, um, if the body here ultimately passes the four sixty-nine, that's what we will live, uh, we will live with.
Hey, one last question, we thought a threat of a furlough.
What's that?
We thought a threat of a furlough.
If the revenues come in at four sixty-nine, I, um, I'm pretty positive that way we can aver- uh, avert a furlough.
If what we have right now, that we, if we pass, you will be able to avert a furlough, right? Within the government of all. This, that's what you said, I just wanted to re- reiterate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, man, we're gonna dispense with the other speakers and we'll go round, the second round, okay? Uh, Senator, I'm sorry, you're on the list, Senator Woody Barnes?
Um, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I really wanna pose the question to the administration, and I just wanna see, um, based on the five percent appropriation reduction and the consensus, I guess, that was delivered to this August body, uh, that there, that the agency, each agency said they can live within. I'm hoping, Carlos, you can give me an answer to this one, real simple. Did the administration go through each agency and ask them, based on, even, even if it's public law, if they could live with this five percent appropriation reduction?
Not, not the five percent, uh, pro- uh, reduction as proposed right now, but the, the two and a half that was originally presented. But, um, again, as I mentioned, if the five percent reduction is applied, then, uh, we will do what, the necess- take the necessary steps to, to, uh, live within, within those reductions.
My second question is, based on this and based on the public law we have on hand, has there been any agency that has come or that has implored the administration to be exempted from this appropriation reduction? And if so, how many? How many agencies has, have, has asked the governor's office or the administration, um, to be, I guess, given a waiver or given an exemption to this five percent appropriation reduction? Has there anybody, with the exception of GPSS, cause we received the letter?
Um, not that I know of, no, no one's, uh...
Has any, Lou, has, has anybody that you know of? The reason why I, I asked that, and I'm just wanting to get a feel from the administration is because just earlier, as I was walking out, I was asked if, um, I'm willing to afford to raise the MIP and public welfare and food stamps assistance to those who are probably gonna fall in line if all these reductions were to be put in place. And I was taken aback. And you know, Mr. Chair, the reason why I ask that also is there's a concern here for me because when the presentation was in, there were seven, several, if not more than several, one, two, three, four, five, six plus agencies who presented to us and said, you know what? We could not live, we could not live if you were to reduce our budget appropriations by two point five percent. And one that comes to mind, because there was more than fifteen or twenty of them here, was the mayor's council. And other agencies that have come and informed us and were really, really honest about saying, you know what? Our mission and our mandate was to provide for the basic services to protect those that need the protecting, even within the indigent community. So when I look at the proposal that's worked in front of me, I, I really, really am concerned and worried that, um, that the administration is sending us a message when the agencies have a whole, totally different agenda because they need to protect what their missions and mandates are. So, um, Mr. Chair, I leave that concern open to the administration because I'm finding it difficult, just based on the questions that my colleagues have asked earlier to the administration, knowing that even as far as looking at the revenues of the GTA proceeds, um, the doorman accounts and also working closely, when we go to that, the GTA proceeds of the one point, uh, four million, but knowing that we've done, we've done some, um, amendments here in the budget to safeguard some of those agencies who said, no, they could not live with that reduction. I, it, it, it just, I know that the Dave Santis, uh, um, Act, the, the Department of Land Management fees, the Department of Revenue and Taxation, the GPD fees, the GFD fees, and even the Parks and Recs fees that it probably haven't been accounted. The numbers there, based on, on the several months that we can, can look into, looking into generating the revenues from there, is far below what's presented today. So, Mr. Chair, I, I'm just really concerned, really bothered. Uh, we've got to be able to remember that the government is here to provide the basic services for our community. So with that in mind, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Uh, you're welcome, um, Senator Cabal? I'll be in, uh, just a few seconds for you, yes.
I have a question, again, on the, uh, proposed, um, the original, the PowerPoint, that presentation that was to be presented by the administration. I do, I do note that the executive order two zero zero seven oh two, two thousand seven oh two, the first statement of the executive order states at twelve million dollars in cost reductions in personnel and operations projected. And with this statement made by the administration with an executive order in a reduction in, in actual costs, my, my question to the administration then now is, what is the impact on the current appropriation levels, uh, that has been provided by the administration in regards to all the agencies that we have contained here? Obviously, twelve million dollars is a lot of money. We are, we are, um, we are, again, looking at about a five million dollar deficit even with all the, uh, implementation of fees and, uh, the restoring of the, um, the, uh, ceilings or, or the reduction of the ceilings of the Dave Santis Amendment. Uh, there was made mention, and maybe this is something that you can help me with. Obviously, there was an imbalance in the, in the budget that was sent to us. And the imbalance of the budget, I think if you're to qua- I think we all know it now, at the original levels that you requested for appropriation and looking at the spending authority, uh, there was a, there was an imbalance of roughly about anywhere from fifteen to twenty million, give or, how much was it? Uh, eighteen? Uh, in the, in the original budget that was presented, it was at, the, the bill number, uh, seventy-four had a four hundred and seventy-four million dollar, uh, revenue figure. But the spending was at four eighty-nine or four ninety? Four ninety-five? Just, I, what was it?
Four eighty-nine, I think, four eighty-nine.
Four eighty-nine. Now, again, the, the statement has been made by the administration that this executive order would reduce costs by twelve million dollars. And I'm just wondering, has this, this twelve million dollar number, has this been effectuated into the, to, to the spending? I mean, if we're spending at four eighty-nine, but there's been a reduction of twelve million co- uh, in, 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 in costs as reflected here, then four eighty-nine minus twelve is four, what is that, four seventy-seven? So I'm, I'm wondering, is, is there something missing here? Cause you're right, every, it, it was sent in balance to us. We, I see this presentation that was, uh, sent to us by the administration. It's there, but I don't see it in any chart here. And I don't see it in the appropriations or any explanations in the spending authority. Is that all coincidence? Or is there something incomplete here? When you have the twelve million in cuts that you stay here, and we had a four hundred and eighty-nine spending authority, obviously, it's four seventy-seven. So, I'm asking any one of you here, Carlos, can you fill in this blank? And obviously, you're, you're stating twelve million dollars in cost reductions, correct? Okay, so an executive order two thousand seven oh two, twelve million dollars in cost reductions. Now, these cost reductions, can you please explain to me where the reduction in costs were? What agency here? You have all these listed, these agencies, so, can you help me fill in the blanks?
Yeah, uh, yes, Senator, um, we are currently, um, we've, we've effectuated, um, fifteen, uh, transfers of, uh, locally funded, uh, employees over into federally funded positions, and that process is ongoing, and we're continuing that process. Um, of course, in line with, with all the grant terms and conditions, we're, we're assuring that, uh, we're not violating any, uh, any, uh, terms and conditions of the grants. Um, we are sending out a cer- we have stopped all, uh, requisitions, uh, being processed down at, um, GSA and re, re-reviewing them. There's going to be a process now where requisitions are reviewed at, uh, BBMR. And, um, uh, prior to them being, um, um, what do you call it, submitted down to GSA. And, uh, we're revisiting all the requisitions that are out there right now. And, uh, we are going to be looking at, uh, funds that are encumbered for, for certain contracts and to see if we can renegotiate some of those contracts. And those, those will be real, um, cuts in the spend rate cause, uh, the funds that are encumbered are, for all intensive purposes, we're planning, we were planning on accommodating those expenditures, so... So we're doing that, we're doing that.
Okay, so let's, let's go back to the twelve million. I got a list here in front of me, um, there's twelve million cuts in costs. So, uh, can we start, I mean, to start with what agency? I mean, to start with, what agencies, where, where does this, where does this $12 million fit in to the government's spending at this point? I mean, is, how much is cut in, I mean, how much is cut in, in the governor's office? How much of this 12 million is in the governor's office? How much of this 12 million is in department administration? How much of this 12 million is rev and tax? How much of this 12 million is cuts in spending in, um, public health, um, fire department, police department? Just fit, fit this 12 million. Because obviously, if this 12 million is a reduction in costs, and we're spending at a 489,000 clip, so, and it'll, actually, with this, it'll help us to make tough, you know, the, these tough decisions that are, that lie ahead, uh, it'll be a lot easier to know when we, when we effectuate this revised budget in public, in bill number 74. It'd be nice for these cuts that we make to be in concert with the cuts that you've already made as, as, um, offered up in Executive Order 2007-02. So I just want to make sure that the overlay on 2007-02 is in line with whatever we need to do here in the budget. Because we do know, we do know the role of BBMR. And obviously, you folks have that responsibility, authority. You can make reductions based on spend, on, on, on collections, on, on actual receipts. You've stated here in an Executive Order 2007-02 that there has been a reduction. So all we need to do, actually, to simplify and help, help this difficult situation that we are in right now, and that, and, and hopefully help that whatever you've done already, we can formalize it, uh, in the budget, uh, or in bill number 74. So, um, where do we start? Just break up that 12 million. Show me where.
Uh, primarily, the 12 million is going to come from savings in, uh, in, um, positions that were being vacated, that were not going to be filled, or keeping vacancies, um, unfilled.
Okay.
Budget of vacancies. Uh, for example, um, the University of Guam, there were 58 vacancies reflected in their sapping pattern, and, oh, yes.
Okay, so, oh, University of Guam. So the $12 million that is cited in, in the Executive Order, uh, the 58 vacancies are, there, there are 58 vacancies in the University of Guam?
That's correct.
Okay, so how much that is quantified in dollars? How does that apply to this 12 million? I just want to get a clear understanding now, so we understand the cuts that have been made and we can apply it, uh, in the formalized budget. So of this $12 million in reductions, uh, University of Guam is part of it, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so how much of you, out of the Uni, at the University of Guam, uh, in the Executive Order that, that has been, uh, put out, boy, 58 positions, dollar-wise, how much is that of the $12 million in UOG?
Um, I have a 1.3.
Holy mackerel. How much?
1.3 million.
1.3 million in UOG. So of the $12 million in saving, in, in cuts in spending, 1 point, how much?
Uh, 1.37.
1.37 million is coming out of UOG. And I guess this has already been done because you, you've had this Executive Order. What else?
Um, GCC would be 12 vacancies, about 331,000.
Three, okay, so GCC, 331,000. Okey-dokey, continue. That's about 1.7 million already, 1.68 million. Okay?
Um, line agencies, there were about 22 positions that, um, were expected to be vacated each month between April and September that could remain unfilled.
Just give me the totals. I want to know, because what I, what, obviously, I don't care for the month to month. I just want to, I want to, I want to, whatever we do tonight, it will be based, uh, on what has already occurred. And with that, uh, we will be in concert with the administration. Okay, so line agencies, what line agencies and how much?
Uh, I don't have the breakdown of the line agencies, but I have the numbers, 1.7, about 1.7.
So line agencies, 1.7 mil. Okay, so 1.7 plus 1.7 is 3.4. Okay, continue.
There's approximately, um, 379 vacancies in federally funded programs totaling about 13.2 million.
Can you break down the 13? Okay, hold on a sec, that's even more than the save.
Right.
Either federal?
Yeah, I, I believe this includes, uh...
Yeah, but obviously, when you say savings, cost reductions, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't care what savings you have with the federal monies. I, I care what you have in local funding. So, uh, I'll be, I'm, I'm, be careful what you say in, in, in policy-wise. I just want to, I want to balance the local appropriation. So you currently have a $12 million reduction in, in costs. You've now accounted for, um, uh, 3 point, what did I say? 3.4? 1.37 plus 33, 331,000 plus 1.7 million. Where's my calculator? Come on, Bernie, help me out here. How much? Okay, so 3.3 million? Okay, continue.
Yes, I, as I was mentioning, the vacancies, that's how many vacancies there are.
Yeah, I, I remember Speaker Forbes, uh, was requesting those vacancies. I don't know, has he gotten them? I haven't, I haven't seen a, a listing of the vacancies. Funded vacancies. Oh, so you, did you sup, did you provide the speaker with a listing of the funded vacancies?
I'm not sure, I have to verify that.
So, okay, so this Executive Order 2007-02, is it, so a great deal of stuff is, um, is fu, is, uh, zeroing out funded vacancies, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so, uh, show me where it is.
And, uh, I believe out of the, um, the total vacancies with, uh, vacancies and filling of positions with, um, from local to federal, or moving up positions over from local to federal, we would realize a total of about 10.6 between all the agencies that have federal programs and vacancies if we were able to effectuate, um, a significant portion of the transfers in from...
Yeah, but this doesn't say, I'm not asking if. This says $12 million in cost reductions. I, I don't want the ifs. What are these $12 million where 3.3? So you have, um, you have, how much did you say and say in, in? Okay, so name the agencies and the savings. And if it's, it's all, if it's all funded vacant, if it's all funded, uh, vacancies, fine. It'll make our decision a lot easier. Obviously, we'd rather cut spending or an appropriation on an agency that is funded for a vacancy rather than cutting an appropriation for an agency, uh, and that means the, uh, the termination of, of an employee. And, uh, obviously, you know, you folks are responsible for the cash management. Uh, what we're responsible for is, is giving you a balanced budget. So, um, we're 3.3? We're still a long ways off to 12.
Senator, if I could ask, um, John is, uh, calling, uh, Joey Cabal right now, too. He prepared, uh, an analysis.
Yeah, so what, and let's just say, let's carry this to its end result. The end result of all this, you folks have a $12 million, uh, uh, figure here in cost reductions. We are currently at a 489 spending. If, if you are to provide us with this information, the breakdown, uh, for every agency where these reductions have occurred, then obviously for, for the members of the body, uh, it would be, we would, we would be able to plug these numbers in and, again, formalize through, through the passage of law, uh, the reductions that you have already implemented.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm still...
Wait, um, I'm having one of my staff contact, the, uh, Joey Cabal, who is responsible for putting that information together. I believe he has a worksheet, uh, that has the detailed breakdown for, uh, all of that.
Okay, so, I'll wait, Mr., Mr., I know you already hit the five minutes, but hey, this is, uh, this can really help. So, uh, I'll be awaiting that information. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Raspicio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I've been listening intently, perbatim, actually, and just as the Senator from, former Speaker from Baragada, now Senator, said, what has changed, uh, over the last couple of weeks? I want to ask, what has changed in the last couple of hours? Before we broke for dinner, uh, the direct, Acting Director, BBMR, said that he, he didn't really assess what this impact will be to the agencies because you were hoping that you'll be forgiven by the legislature. And now tonight, you said that you don't believe that if you got the 469 million-dollar revenue, uh, as, as the revised revenue estimate stands now, uh, you, it's your opinion that there would not be any, um, furloughs or any salary cuts, correct?
If we realize the 469.
Correct.
Right.
Now, let me just ask you, uh, as a agency head, and I'd just ask you, you're facing a $68,000 cut. What would this $68,000 mean to your agency?
It would be a significant cut.
Would that cut, would that cut eat into, uh, furloughs or salary cuts for your classified employees? Assuming you got your 100% allotment based on your appropriation, you got cut $68,000, Director Bernalio.
Right.
What would this mean to your agency?
It would, it would mean that it, um, it would entail some drastic cost-cutting measures.
Would that impact personnel?
It, it may impact personnel, but...
Will that impact personnel?
With, with regards to classified...
May is a really big difference, and you're treading very lightly here. And very, would that impact personnel?
Well, that, that cost, uh, level would, yeah, would not be sufficient to fund personnel as it is today.
Can you just answer the question? Would it impact you on your personnel?
Yes.
All right, now let me ask another agency head. We heard from Director Loggins saying that a 2.5% cut will result in a, maybe furloughing out or laying off 20 employees. So you're facing a 414,810 cut. What would that do to your department?
Um, the merge, uh, I, I believe most of my, uh, my budget relates to personnel, uh, and the rest relates to contractual, which is my rent, my, uh, my vendors, um, computer vendors. If that was implemented, I cannot cut my, my, my rent, my vendors. It's, we've got a contract with them and we owe them money up to now. So, uh, the only place I can see is, is, is through personnel.
And at a 2.5% scenario, you've already pleaded with the legislature and you have overwhelming support to, uh, not touch your budget, and Speaker Ben had amendment to take care of that. It would go from 8.2 million down to 7.8. That 414,000 reduction will certainly impact personnel, correct?
From the budget, yes, it would.
Assuming we got the six...
There's nowhere else I can take from it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not upset with you or anybody up there. I just want to go down the list, Director, next Director, you are facing, uh, Administration, Director Lou Perez, a 407,000 cut. Assuming we had a revenue collected at 469 million, what would that mean to your agency?
Um, I think, Senator Raspicio, we will be all right because I've, I've had a number of vacancies since the beginning of this year and, and, uh, in the beginning of there, I was authorized to fill some. I have not filled those, so, uh, without, um, adding, you know, replacing or hiring any, any, uh, employees to fill vacancies, I, I'd probably just be okay.
I want to give the BBMR Director the benefit of the doubt. Are you taking into your calculations the governor's ability to transfer money into these agencies?
Well, um, that's, that would come into play, yes, Senator, with regards to looking at where maybe, um, agencies have people retiring.
So your answer will be that if we realize a 469 million-dollar revenue level collected, actual cash collected, with the governor's transfer authority, you would be, you would, you believe the governor will be able to, uh, transfer money to rev and tax so he won't lay off anybody or terminate anybody or even, uh, sorry, or even reduce their salaries?
Given the governor's transfer flexibility, yes.
So the, the whole exercise prior to dinner of, uh, how, how I offered this amendment as a means of providing some kind of message to the bondholders that we are serious about our, our getting our financial house in order, uh, you basically just confirmed that, that that ability to transfer money back into those agencies is very, you're very blatant about thus, your desire or the, the, the opportunity to circumvent the current law, which we're, we're now, uh, having to recognize is that with, with regard to the 5% automatic deappropriation.
I'm not, uh, trying to circumvent the law, I'm not sure I follow you on that.
So you're saying if the law were to pass and everybody, all these agencies got deappropriated, governor still has his transfer authority, but it's okay because he can funnel money back into the very agencies that weren't complying?
Uh, I think we would do that only to the extent that we would not, um, um, hamper existing operations.
But you're going to get a revenue of 469, that's what you're testifying to.
Right, and within that 469...
How could you, how could you tell me that mental health cannot take a 5% appropriation reduction of 225,000 when they have a current shortfall of 677,000? Same can be said with the fire department, a $1 million, uh, 5% appropriation reduction, they have a 4.4 agency shortfall. Department of Youth Affairs, 167,000, 5% appropriation reduction with a 245,000 cash shortfall. How can these agencies who currently have a cash shortfall be okay with a 5% cut?
Again, as, as, um, as we do, um, every year, uh, we, we revisit the expenditure levels and the projected expenditure levels throughout the year, and, um, normally what happens if we are given the, the opportunity with transfer flexibility, um, we, we find where lapses exist in other agencies and transfer it to, uh, those agencies that are experiencing shortfalls.
Earlier, you testified that, uh, when Senators asked about the governor's Executive Order and that 12 million will quantify, you testified that, uh, there has been some adjustments, uh, to some unclassified personnel, correct?
Yes.
I wrote a letter to, uh, Bee, uh, Chief of Staff, George Bomba, on April 3rd, asking for copies of those GG ones, and, and former Speaker Ben is right, the gentleman from Baragada, when that PowerPoint presentation said has, it's all as if though those things have been already implemented, and I wanted to wait till the April 1st, uh, date of implementations. I gave a couple of days, I wrote a letter, and I still haven't got a response. I'm going to ask, uh, Director Perez for copies of the GG ones that evidence those reductions. Carlos, you still want to tell me again, so I have some sense of comfort, that if we got a 469, uh, revenue, actual cash collected, and with all these agencies with a, with experiencing a 5% reduction, you're going to tell me again that it will not impact on personnel, there won't be any furloughs or salary cuts?
Given that we, we would have, uh, flexibility to move funding around, again, uh...
But your spending authority will only be 469 million. Your current spending authority is 495 million. It's been reduced by 26 million. You're going to tell me, after going through five weeks of, of, uh, exercise, bringing agency by agency by agency in here, and how they've testified that a 2.5% reduction in their spending authority will result in employees maybe being, uh, uh, cut salaries or furloughed? 400, you're, you, you, do you recognize that your spending authority for 2007 is 495 million?
I'm saying that, uh...
All you have to spend, based on the current scenario, is 469... All you have to spend, based on the current scenario, is 469 million.
Right.
How can the governor transfer beyond 469 million if the legislature reduced that spending authority to 469? And that 469 takes into account the 5% appropriation reduction.
Right, that's what I guess I'm trying to explain, is that if that is the level that is passed by this body, then that is the level that we will live with.
And what would that living with mean, Carlos? In your own agency alone, you said it might, it will impact personnel.
Right, given the transfer flexibility, that if we are allowed transfer flexibility, again, those areas or those departments where lapses may be occurring, as well as the cost reduction measures that we're implementing now, we're hoping to realize savings in transferring people over into federal positions wherever we can.
But all you have is 469 million. It's a different story if you had a spending authority of 495 million and monies beyond 469 came in.
Right, and that's all we'll deal with.
So what's the answer? I know my time is running up. What's the answer?
The answer is.
This scenario that the department administration prepared, which reduces the spending authority down and has about $22 million worth of all the agencies that didn't comply, the 5%, would this, the legislature were to adopt this, would this result in furloughs or salary cuts to the classified employees? Given, I don't want to go around again, given the 469 million cash was collected, right now, we're tracking 434 million with the current, with the current revenue enhancements and the revised revenue estimate, it'll go up to 469 million. Given you get 469 million, are any employees going to be furloughed or salaries cut as a result of this reduced spending level to 469 million? No transfers? Strictly spending authorization, 469 million?
With no transfers, if we were held to that level, for example, in our department, then we would have to, maybe not furlough, but we would have to look at our unclassified personnel first.
An $8 million impact will not, to GPSS, won't impact teacher salaries and other classified employees? An $8 million impact, a 5% reduction of GPSS, that won't eat into their personal operation requirements?
I can't speak for GPSS.
Ms. Chairman, I have my answer, and it's very unfortunate that the individual has not sworn, raises right hand. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right. Any other speakers at this time? Okay, we'll take a couple-minute recess. We've had a very long and extended break. We're going to go ahead and recess till 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, which time we'll reconvene and convene the whole, convene the whole and be in recess. Good night.